Good evening, citizens of Portsmouth, and welcome to our public work session. I want to acknowledge all of our visitors and individuals joining us today, our city staff, in addition to our city manager, Mr. Carter, our city attorney, Levonda Graham Williams, and also our city clerk, Ms. Deborah White. I want to thank you all for being here, and I want to thank my colleagues on council for showing up today as well. This is our first full council meeting of 2025, and we are excited about being here. With that, we will ask that all of, I will ask that all of my colleagues note their presence electronically.
Six members of the city council are present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Now, we will turn the meeting over to the city manager, Mr. Carter. Sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Our work session tonight will feature three main agenda items: a presentation by Bon Secures, an overview of planning and zoning training, and the county council liaison report. First, Bon Secures outlined their plan to utilize, to utilize bonds issued by the Henrico Economic Development Authority for facility upgrades across Virginia, Ohio, and South Carolina, including some improvements that will happen at Maryview. This informational presentation will emphasize that neither the city nor the EDA will bear any financial liability obligations related to these bonds. Bon Secures requesting a resolution from the council solely to ensure compliance with federal tax-exempt bond regulations. First, we have the representatives from Bon Secures. If you come forward at this time, they will provide some information to you concerning those bonds. Please introduce yourselves and your colleague.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Thank you for having us. I'm Erin Sutton with the law firm of Dinsmore &amp; Scholl, and we are serving as bond counsel on this transaction. Bon Secor Mercy Health is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit health system with facilities in five states. Here in Virginia, they have the Richmond Market and the Hampton Roads Markets, which, as you know, includes Maryview Hospital here in Portsmouth. In accordance with a plan of finance adopted by the Mercy Health, the Bon Secor Mercy Health Board of Directors last week, Bon Secors is seeking to do a public offering of tax-exempt revenue bonds, the proceeds of which will be used to refund some of their outstanding debt and fund some capital projects for their facilities in the Commonwealth, including at Maryville, Maryview, sorry, as Mr. Carter mentioned. The Henrico County EDA will serve as the governmental issuer of these tax-exempt bonds. And at this time, I'm coming to you for two reasons: one, a state law reason, and two, the federal law reason. The state law reason is that, under Virginia Industrial Development Authority Act, in industrial, I'm sorry, in economic development authority, Henrico, in this case, can issue revenue bonds to finance facilities outside their jurisdiction only with a concurring resolution then from legislative body of those other localities. The Henrico EDA is meeting this Thursday to consider an inducement resolution, which starts the bond approval process. So, Bon Secor Mercy Health is the borrower, needs to then take that inducement resolution from Henrico to the other localities, including here in the city of Portsmouth, for that concurring resolution, which would allow Henrico to issue the bonds and money to be spent here in Portsmouth. The second reason is that we will need your approval under federal tax law, under the IRS code. In order to obtain tax exemption for qualified 501(c)(3) bonds, we must first have a public hearing, also known as a Tefra hearing, which many of you are familiar with, seven days after public notice was published in a newspaper, and then obtain the applicable elected representative approval for the jurisdiction, which is you, the city council. Notice of the public hearing was published today in the Virginian Pilot, which will cover the public hearing that the City of Portsmouth Economic Development Authority will hold next Tuesday morning. After that, we will come back to council to seek your approval after the public hearing and after Henrico gives their inducement resolution. It's anticipated that the bonds will be offered and sold around mid-April, and the financing will close around May 1st. And at this time, the portion of the bonds allocated to Maryview is approximately 30 million, which covers prior capital expenditures going back two years and future capital plans going forward two years. It's important to note that the debt service on the bonds are secured only by the funds and revenues of Bon Secures Mercy Health and will not constitute a debt or general obligation of any political subdivisions, including the city of Portsmouth. So, I'm here to answer any questions that you might have about the bond financing. And I have with me John Haynes, who is the CFO of the Hampton Roads Market for Bon Secors, and he can answer any questions that you have about the Maryview projects. Thank you.
Any questions for my colleagues on council? Councilman Hugo, sir, you have the floor.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Ms. Sutton. Thanks for your presentation. So, can you share with us the timing that we should expect to see this concurring resolution from Henrico County?
Henrico is meeting this Thursday to pass an inducement resolution. That starts the process then for the other localities. So, we are planning on next Tuesday then holding a public hearing here in the city of Portsmouth at the Economic Development Authority.
Okay.
So, then anytime after that, you can consider a resolution to give your concurring resolution. It doesn't have to happen within seven days, it can happen after that. But we'd like to get them all in before the end of March, since we're printing the offering document first week of April. If that gives you an idea of the, it's tentatively scheduled for two weeks from today, but we'll go at your schedule.
Okay, thank you. And then regarding the potential capital investments at Maryview, can you summarize what the thinking is?
Yes, sir. Thank you. So, again, John Haynes, the market CFO for Hampton Roads. So, as Erin said, a lot of these are retrospective. A list was provided. Hopefully, you have that. But if not, there's approximately 20 to 25 million of retro items. They categorize into patient flow, safety, some upgrades, as well as aesthetics. So, some of the highlights, we relocated interventional radiology into other CV services to make that better for patient flow, as well as more efficient for staff. We invested in, we relocated the endoscopy suites, making that two more efficiencies, so patients spend less time at the hospital, process through quicker. Safety, we did a Omnicell conversion, which is all of our, you all have probably seen these in the hospitals, the medication dispense, dispensing mechanisms, to make that more safe, more accountability within that system, easier to reconcile for those things. The aesthetics, we worked on the front of the hospital. We also did some rearrangement in the emergency room to make better flow there. I can go into more detail, if you want, on the retrospective items from a prospective, projects that we have going on. We're currently working on our SPD, so our cleaning for equipment around our OR, bringing that up to standards for safety reasons and efficiency as well there, as well as a kitchen renovation. So, the kitchen has needed some work for quite a while, and so a complete revamp of that. That, about $6 million, about five to six on the SPD as well. Those are the primary things that we have going on that make up this 30 million.
Okay, thanks for that summary.
Absolutely, sir.
In addition to that summary, I am aware of a couple of things taking place in terms of future, future projects. I know that there's an imaging center that's going to be coming online here in the city of Portsmouth. Are you aware of that?
Yes, sir, absolutely. Our Portsmouth mammography.
Right. And so, in addition to that, there may be another project that will be coming online, which is a capital project. I don't know if you're at liberty to mention any of those or if it's premature to share that. But my question is specifically, are any of these dollars, as you said, prior allocation and a new allocation, are any of these dollars going to be allocated to any of those efforts?
Absolutely. These are not set aside specifically for those. However, this will free up funding. We will put our projects forward. Obviously, part of the ministry extending multiple states to be bid on. We have placeholders already in for certain things. We are developing those. I believe you are aware of strategies that we've put in place around Maryview.
Yes, sir.
With that, Inc.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Vice Mayor Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Will any of these changes affect the workforce?
Will they affect the workforce? I would say absolutely. So, from all of these flow things, they will make it quite easier. I'm sure it's, well, I don't want to take for granted, but healthcare workforce has deteriorated with vacancy levels and things. So, there are efficiencies just from these systematic changes that will help with that. Any of our strategies will increase our need for more workforce, absolutely. So, I would expect those to increase the need for additional workers.
But nothing that you're willing to put a number to tonight, either up or down?
As far as number of employees? No, sir, I'm not ready to put a number of employees on that.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Carter, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Dr. Russell, you ready? Next, Dr. Russell will provide an overview of the planning process, highlighting the council's critical role in addressing planning and zoning matters. Dr. Russell.
Good evening, everyone. I am Rhonda Russell, and I serve as the Director of Planning for the city of Portsmouth. Mr. Carter agreed to permit staff to share some information with the council regarding our agenda items that you will consider this evening, in part because we have several new members of the council. And he asked that the focus of the presentation really help council members understand how these applications process before you this evening. Okay? So, all properties in the city of Portsmouth and the Commonwealth of Virginia have an underlying zoning designation. And properties that are not prescriptively zoned as a boilerplate item, we recognize them as the lowest-density zoning designation. So, sometimes you have properties that are underwater. You have properties that we believe might have been in the public right of way, but aren't. And so, that gives us the greatest level of protection to consider them the lowest residential zoning district. Property owners can request a zoning map amendment. And those map amendments are typically to permit an additional use, a more intense use of the property, and that is done by application. And so, a property owner or someone that approaches a property owner and asks for authorization to rezon their property, they do that by application. That application is considered by the planning department. And then, the planning department develops a recommendation that we deduce in writing, and you have a number of recommendations in your package this evening. And we consider a number of items in making those recommendations. We consider our comprehensive plan. We consider the infrastructure in the area that is available to support a more intense use of the property. We consider existing facilities in the area, neighboring property owners, and the input of those adjacent property owners. That recommendation is first presented to our planning commission, which is appointed by the city council. And the planning commission holds a public hearing. That public hearing is advertised, and notices are sent to all adjacent property owners. And after careful deliberations, our planning commission forwards a recommendation to the city council for action on these items. And Portsmouth, we also have representatives of council that sit in on those public hearing deliberations and subsequently share information to council members about those discussions. Property owners or applicants are able to voluntary offer proffers of conditions in support of their applications. And those conditions typically would further restrict the development of the property. And those are typically offered in support of a rezoning application. So, if they're restricting development of their property, that might make it more attractive to develop that property in an instance where it doesn't gain staff support or support by the planning commission. Another tool in our zoning ordinance is the use permit application. And so, the ordinance permits, in some instances, a use with a use permit. And what that does is it allows a site-specific evaluation of the appropriateness of a use at a specific location. And so, sometimes it might be okay for use to be permitted on a property with conditions that might mitigate off-site impacts. And those conditions could include things like hours of operation, additional setbacks. It just further restricts how the property can be used. And so, the difference between conditions that are tied to a use permit and conditions that are tied to a rezoning is that use permit conditions are not voluntary. They're recommended by staff, by the planning commission, by the city council. And usually, they're the minimum restrictions that are necessary or believed necessary to make a use permissible and approvable at a specific location. Should I have answered this one before that? So, you have on your agenda later today, both two rezoning applications, two of each, two rezoning applications, two use permit applications. We believe that you also received an amended proffer statement for one of your rezoning applications. So, I am happy to answer any questions about the specific tools, the rezoning tool, as well as the use permit tool that you might have before you this evening. As is our practice, the applicant at the city council public hearing is the only formal presenter for these agenda items, and staff is available to answer questions that the council might have.
Councilwoman Thomas, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation, Dr. Russell. Very informative, especially being new to council and with some of the items we have on our agenda coming up. One of the items, I won't speak specifically to that, but more so to the process. But on the planning commission notes, I noticed that, like, maybe on the last page of some of those documents, it would say, were there responses from certain, I guess, other stakeholders outside of the planning commission? So, does each application that we receive go to all of those stakeholders in specific? I know I saw, like, sometimes there's a traffic study request that are done. Sometimes they're not. And then, I saw in one case where I was interested, did the schools have any responses? It said no, but do they get all of those applications in our process?
Yes. So, Councilwoman Thomas, you're speaking to the item on the agenda that's departmental and applicable organization comments?
Yes.
So, as a part of our review process, we send an interdepartmental, inter-agency comment letter, and we send the application, and we send the maps and any supporting documents that are submitted with the application to all of the departments, always. And so, the comments, we'll itemize them by department and agency. And so, when it says no comment, it means that it was sent, and there was no response. Does that answer your question?
It does, yes. That's it for now. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions for Dr. Russell from my colleagues? Seeing none, well, I will share with you. I've heard a couple of comments from business owners and folks in the community about the department. And one of the comments that I would like to share with you that people that have come into your office and have had an opportunity to go through the process, they were very appreciative of your staff and how they took care of helping them to be educated about the process. So, I wanted to let you know that personally.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work, ma'am. Thank you. Ma'am? That concludes your presentation. Thank you, Dr. Russell. Mr. Carter, you have the floor, sir.
All right, thank you, Mayor. The final thing that I have for this evening is to introduce to you our new HR director, Mr. Michael Claytor. He's in the audience with us tonight. If you stand, Michael, so he can be recognized. Michael brings with him over 20 years of diverse HR leadership and consulting experience to the city of Portsmouth. Prior to joining Portsmouth, Mr. Claytor worked in the HR for the city of Richmond, further enhancing his knowledge in public sector HR operations. Michael has held several roles across industries, including behavioral health, utilities, and food production, where he built strong business partnerships, developed top talent, and championed employees. His work emphasized a commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion initiatives in the community he serves. I'd like to introduce to you Mr. Michael Claytor. Mr. Claytor, if you don't mind, to come forth and maybe say a few words to the council?
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here, Honorable Mayor, Honorable Vice Mayor, Honorable City Council Members, and Honorable City Manager. Thank you all for being here, and the other guests that are here today. I'm honored to be here. I've worked with the city of Richmond in human resources. I've worked for some other larger employers in the area. And I saw your opportunity and put my hat in for it, and fortunately, it worked out. I'm originally from Roanoke, Virginia is my hometown. My wife and I, we are in Chesterfield County. So, I have a daughter down here in Hampton. So, I have good, close ties to the area. And I saw some excellent changes being made and proposals in Portsmouth. And I thought, I've done some things with human resources as far as employee relations, working with managers, handling change and things like that. And I wanted to bring that experience to the table. So, I'm happy to be here. And if you all have any questions for me, I will answer those for you.
Mr. Claytor, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Does that conclude your presentations?
Yes, sir. I am done. Thank you.
Very good. So, we do, we have come to the point in our agenda for council liaison reports. And do we have any council liaison reports at this time? Councilman Hugo, sir, you have the floor.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. So, a couple of liaison reports tonight. First off, the Crime and Gun Violence Reduction Task Force. Councilman Tillage and I are the council liaisons to that task force. They met a week ago, last night. I guess I would characterize the group as they are still in the forming stage, and we're encouraging them into the storming stage. So, as part of forming, they're working on getting staffing in place for the working committees that were included as part of the bylaws. And so, my invitation to our neighbors in Portsmouth, if you have ideas to contribute to address the crime and gun violence issues, your opportunity is to seek to join one of those working committees to address. And in particular, the working committee that we're really keen on getting stood up is the Community Engagement Committee, which is intended to allow us to gather good ideas from our citizens. So, if you're interested in working on any of those working committees, you can contact Councilman Tillage, myself, and we'll put you in touch with the committee chairs to get you brought on board. I want to mention that the task force is working in collaboration with Portsmouth United. In fact, our Portsmouth United Executive Director, Ms. Matthews, is the working secretary for the task force. Portsmouth United has begun meeting weekly on Thursday evening, 6:00 p.m., at 206 High Street. So, if you're interested in seeing and understanding what Portsmouth United is doing in the way of engaging our violence interrupters and our grassroots organizations, 6:00 p.m. Thursday night at 206 High Street. And then, we have issued a request for proposal to try to hire a consultant to help the task force, assemble the crime reduction plan. That was advertised, and unfortunately, we only received one respondent before Christmas. So, the city manager has elected to reissue that RFP. That process is underway now. Hopefully, by around the end of this week or early next week, we'll have that RFP back on the street. And hopefully, then, hire a consulting group that can assist the task force leadership in moving out, on building out, our crime reduction plan. And then, finally, I want to share that Chief Jenkins is hosting his quarterly forum next Wednesday evening, 6:00 p.m. at 206 High Street. And so, we're all invited to hear the chief's take on how things are going. So, that's it for the Crime and Gun Violence Reduction Task Force. Do you have anything to add? Okay. And then, a note from the planning commission. So, I attended planning commission last week. Dr. Russell, I appreciate you doing the brief tonight for the things that are on tonight's agenda, which really came out of planning commission before the holidays. Planning commission met last week and had one item on their agenda, and I want to mention it to my colleagues because it's kind of an interesting item. So, last summer, the vice mayor actually pushed along the notion that we should do honorary street naming. And so, the first application for doing honorary street naming made it to the planning commission at their meeting this last week. And we'll see that at a future city council meeting. I bring that up because the planning commissioners asked, I thought, some pretty good questions around, have we set the threshold correctly? Turns out that this first application is from a church to honor their pastor by naming the street adjacent to the church in an honorary way. And so, you know, we need to think about that because we've got a lot of churches and a lot of pastors. And so, we just, I think, maybe need to take a good, close look at the criteria that we have in place for honorary street naming. I think the planning commissioners were expressing a little bit of concern about, have we opened floodgates? So, we'll see over time. Anyway, that's it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. And I will add, as a mayor liaison report, if there's such a thing, I will be attending the United States Conference of Mayors in Washington, DC on Friday through Sunday. So, I'll bring an update back. Hopefully, we'll get a chance to get some good information to bring back to the city of Portsmouth. And that concludes our liaison reports. We do have a need for a closed session. So, at this point, I will ask that our vice mayor please read the closed session motion.
I move to go into a closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code subsection 2.2-3711A1 for the purpose of discussing and considering the position of city auditor, the performance of the city manager, and appointments to boards and commissions.
Please vote electronically.
This motion is adopted 6-0.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We are in closed. We have, yeah, we have to certify to come out of closed first. So, we do have to certify to come out of closed. And so, at this time, I would ask- So we do have to certify to come out of closed, and so at this time, I would ask Vice Mayor Moody to please read the certification of closed meeting.
I hereby move that each council member certify that to the best of his or her knowledge. One, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, are considered in the closed meeting, just concluded.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Would you please vote electronically?
The motion is adopted 6-0.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That concludes our public work session. This meeting is adjourned, and we will reconvene at 7:05 for our regular council meeting. Thank you.